Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. We appreciate you attending. I'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Test. Roll call please. Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Here.
Mr. Haverley?
Present.
Mr. Kinzer? Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney? Mr. Rudy?
Here.
Mr. Kinzer, are you still there?
Yes.
During roll call, your name was missed. Go ahead and say present.
Present.
Thank you. Do we have any changes that anyone would like to see to the agenda tonight? If there are none, can I have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Maxey.
A second.
And a second by Hazelhurst. Roll call please. Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Haverley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer? Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to Audience to Visitors. We only have one tonight. Mrs. Wendellborn. Thank you for coming out tonight.
I would speak again to the board on behalf of all the parents that are voting to send their children back to school. We are arguing this virus isn't real. It's very real. It isn't going anywhere to kill or shock anytime soon. So why are you waiting for this to happen? It's part of our everyday lives. We need to learn to adapt, live with this new virus, and send our kids back to school. I personally know a family that was sent home from Cherry Valley Elementary School. When I called to see how everyone was doing, it was fine, a bit sick, and stressed out over e-learning. That was the biggest issue they had. They weren't worried about being sick. It was the e-learning they couldn't deal with. Let that sink in a little bit. If a family with three kids was more stressed about e-learning than feeling a little sick and under the weather. I understand the world's concern with the physical sickness of the virus, but what about the mental sickness? The suicide rates in adolescents are on the rise. Rates are up 50% since 2007 and climbing. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in kids 10 to 24. Quote, "The stress the pandemic is putting on students in the form of social isolation, family financial stability, or death of loved ones doesn't disappear," surveys have found that the pandemic has been hard on teenagers' mental health. This is per Education Weekly, took data back from CDC. I also want to voice the frustrations we are having with extreme miscommunication within the school board. I've been reading the Board's Education Policy Manual, a policy manual that you have chosen to uphold when you decided to run for the position you're in. A policy that states, as a belief, on section 1.3, quote, "Communication and cooperation are essential for a successful school district and foster a sense of community." The mission statement reads, quote, "The school district in an active partnership with parents and community will promote excellence in a caring environment in which all students learn and grow." I'm a new parent to the district, just 29 days into the school year, and I cannot believe there is this much miscommunication, mistrust, and lack of support for the community. Trust me, there's no sense of community gain or help by this board. You are completely disregarded with community once, and it's falling apart. Therefore, you're not upholding the policy manual or your mission statement. I can say right now, this is not a partnership at all. It's about that we're finding with each other, which needs to end. Can you honestly say that all students are in an environment which they will learn and grow? Are there not some that need school's help of to help avoid the distractions at home? Community individuals are making statements on social media such as, quote, "In my whole 74 years, has she not seen such mistrust in the community? Imagine what she's seen. Civil rights movement, Vietnam, World War II, and the Great Depression. Yet her unwillingness to budge on bringing students back to school full-time is the worst she's seen she's seen." Let's follow this up with some beliefs that are listed in the policy manual. Number four, education includes the development of social and personal skills. With virtual learning, are social skills really being developed? As parents tell children, TV isn't real. Don't believe everything you see on the internet. Now we're saying, make friends on the internet. See those little boxes? Those are your friends. Make friends with the little boxes on the screen. Aren't we confusing our children's social skills? Yes, we are. As a matter of fact, my five-year-old hasn't acted very differently since this summer. His behavior is so unlike himself. In my house, and I finally took him to the pediatrician for some clarity and advice. I was told that doctors are seeing children acting out due to the lack of routine behaviors and social distancing. My son keeps calling his kids in his class fake. When I brought this up, I was told it was very interesting. It's interesting because usually kids don't see that, right? TV is reality, not fake. But I did such a great job as parents, and the parents teaching him that, that it now backfired right on me. My son is struggling interacting with friends, friends that with e-learning he isn't able to make friends, I promise, he made in new school, like so many other kindergartners are. Let's move on to number seven. All students have their right to equal educational opportunities. We can all agree that this is not being upheld. We don't have the same opportunities as the parents that want to stay e-learning. Families are being forced to educate their children in a manner that isn't what they want and do not see as equal. Not all children have parents that can focus on their e-learning all day. Some are using friends and family to help, possibly family that isn't tech savvy, friends for daycare students' jobs that isn't to educate. I consider my ability to work from home very fortunate, but it still doesn't allow me to focus 100% of my time on e-learning. I would state that I do not have the same equal opportunities as, not a stay-at-home parent does. I would also like to back the teachers that are teaching. They're qualified to teach their children, but must rely on help from others because they are currently teaching e-learning at the same time. If their students were able to be in class, there would be equality. Section two is the power and duties of the school board. Number eight is establishing an equal educational opportunities policy that prohibits unlawful discrimination. Discrimination means unjust treatment of different categories of people, like people that want their children back to fully learning and working parents. I, for one, feel extremely discriminated against because my belief that children belong in school is not being upheld by this district. Instead of creating a sense of community during a pandemic, you're creating mistrust, hate, and discrimination against those that you aren't electing to help.
Ms. Wendellborn, we appreciate your time tonight, but your time is up. We really do. Thank you. For our board policy. Not my personal decision, and certainly because I don't want to hear what you have to say.
You may turn this there if you have personal agenda or insult to me on the phone. And I'll just let the board know if he's definitely... You guys aren't reading policies. You guys can get a bathroom. You really, really...
Thank you, Ms. Wendellborn. I've got another letter from somebody that I'd like to read tonight. We put in the agenda tonight that any comments you may wish to submit to the board would be read at the meeting if they were submitted before 5:00 today. And I got one. This is from Brianne Lazard. Hello, school board. This is Brianne Lazard. I'm a sophomore at North Boone High School, and today I am emailing you with my concerns about e-learning. By now, it should be very apparent to everybody that the current situation is unpopular. Not one single fellow student I have talked to has said that they do not want to return to school. In fact, many of my peers have announced on Google meets that they hate e-learning because they don't get to interact with their peers, and they aren't learning anything, and they feel safe enough to return in-person learning. I 100% agree with this statement. All of my teachers have said that they wish they were in school, and we are not getting the proper discussion and labs that go at our lessons. This e-learning plan is not the right choice for the majority of students. I just finished my fourth week of virtual school, and so far, it has not met my expectations. Between internet connection issues, despite district efforts, and being unable to have a proper discussion with my peers, e-learning does not compare to in-person learning. Myself and many of my classmates often have trouble logging into Google meets because of these schools' internet. People are being kicked out of every meeting I have attended. I, myself, have been booted out of meetings several times, causing me to lose valuable class time. I've also waited 34 minutes for a Google meet to load, causing me to be 29 minutes late for class. The high school, only having each class twice per week with no classes being held on Wednesdays means that we will only have a class for 2 hours and 40 minutes per week. My sister is an eighth grader at North Boone Middle School, and they have class for 3 hours and 20 minutes per week, with classes on Wednesdays. If we were at school with a typical schedule, we would have each class for 4 hours per week, as opposed to the 2 hours and 40 minutes we have now. I've also had teachers express concerns to us that we may not learn enough this year to be fully prepared for our classes next year. This could potentially set me, a high school student, up for failure in reaching my collegiate goals, and I've been working so hard towards them for 10 years. What happened to the choice of the people? In the original survey, a bit over 77% of parents who responded that they wanted their kids back in school. Where have the voices of the people gone? It feels as though their opinions have been ignored over and over again. Thank you, Brianne Lazard. That was the only letter that I received. And that would put an end to our Audience to Visitors, and brings us to unfinished business, item number five, the Modified Re-Entry Plan.
Yes, I recommend that the board pass Phase One of the re-entry plan. The plan has had minor modifications since our last meetings. Dates were adjusted for all four phases. Phase one will add students in pre-K, kindergarten, and special education in grades five through eight. All dates that are presented are tentative, pending unfavorable health metrics. Additional information has been added to the presentation to address the concerns from nursing, supplies, and custodial procedures. New metrics that are now being used by the Boone County Health Department will be described, and it is our recommendation that Phases Two, Three, and Four will be approved at a later time when they have been reviewed and discussed through a board committee that the board is looking to put together tonight. So with that, I will begin our PowerPoint, and my first few slides here, I'm going to address some of the concerns that have come up from the last meeting and outside for some of my conversations that I've held with different people. So one of the questions was, was the plan creation. Who created it? Well, it was the District Office Administration Team that created the initial plan. September 10th, we shared that plan with principals. September 11th through the 18th, we did a lot of work with small groups, principal met with staff members, and we also shared the plan informally with the nurses during that week. On September 16th, we had a Labor Management Meeting that again went over the plan and addressed some of the concerns that were coming up back through our Labor Management channels. September 18th then, the plan was uploaded to the board packet for September 22nd discussion. And a lot of the changes and things that are presented within this plan really did kind of come back through some of the conversations and concerns, and looked to address some of those concerns that came back from some of those group meetings that we had vetting the plan. So tonight, then, I know last time, we talked about some of the nursing concerns that were still sitting there. I do want to let you know that our nursing staff has worked hard to put together nursing protocols, and you can see there are 10 different scenarios that the nurses have protocols for that are all dealing with COVID-19, possible outbreaks, protocols for things that you'd need to do within the school, and our nurses will be meeting with staff to go over those protocols so that our staff sees that there's a lot of plans and details in the everyday operating procedure of how we will handle things when students get back. I'm not going to read you all 10, but that gives you the 10 items that they have within their manual for protocols. Cleaning protocols. I've worked with Jim. Jim has shared the cleaning protocols with you. I shared this again in your packet. This is a slide that gives you an idea. We've got routines that are set about for classrooms. Jim is confident we have enough personnel at this point to be able to take care of those cleaning rituals that we have. We have a specialized protocol that has been handed out to our custodians. One of the questions that came back too was, is how much time do we need to clean a room at night with all these touch points and everything else? And through the practice that we've seen so far, it's 15 to 20 minutes, depending on the size of the classroom. It can go up and down just a little bit there, but we're anywhere from, if we're averaging, right around 20 minutes. One of the things that can add that and go up a little higher is if we have not an outbreak, but a quarantine, or somebody tests positive, then we go into great detail of really going through and doing a deep thorough cleaning into a room that has had a positive case identified. So then the time goes up a little bit when we get those individual cases along with that. Next slide, please. At this point, another concern that came up last night, do we have enough supplies on hand? And through our conversations, through my conversations with Melissa, Melissa asked for permission to take this over. I was more than happy to let her help with ordering supplies. Our direction to everyone has been, make sure you've got enough on hand for two to three months. With that being said, we also know that as we phase kids back in, that pace could accelerate. But if we continue to keep that two-to-three-month goal, we can figure out that pacing and make sure that we order and have supplies on hand as we go along and move forward. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Melissa, let her talk a little bit about the process and what we have on hand in the district to make sure that we're well-prepared.
So we put a process in place in the district, working with the operations and maintenance side as well, to make sure that each school has on hand about two, three months of supplies. And then the district office also has supplies on hand, so if somebody needs something, they can get it. We've put a process in place that orders in by Thursday, Friday, so we have something so that people know what and when and how to access materials that they need. So this is just a general list of what we have. We obviously have more specific things. Some people need different PPE and supplies, but this is the general list that we have in the district. And in addition to this, we also have just recently, since this has been published, gotten more adult and pediatric masks. We've gotten about 300 more face shields, about 180 gallons. So as you can see, we're continuing to build up our supplies so that we're ready for when kids come back to school.
Set it. Last Friday, our Boone County Health Department came out with new metrics. Well, actually, it was probably two Fridays ago. And in this, it looks to be more school-specific with the metrics that they're staring at so that it's accurate and predictable about when and how we can pace and bring students back to an in-person model. The five areas that they're looking at are the Boone County positivity rate, the diagnostic testing turnaround time. That's significant because if there's an outbreak, they want quick turnaround time so that they can better and aggressively deal with any type of outbreak that they may see. The incident rate is a community transmission rate, which goes and then directly affects back to positivity rate. And then the youth incident rate, that starts to stare at kids that are 0 through 18. What is our rate of contraction through that, through community youth transmission? So, and then the last thing that the recommendation from the Health Department is, is that those health metrics need to be steady in the positive range for 10 days before you would bring a group back. So they look to break it out into three different groups. One would be a virtual group. That's when the metrics are not solid, and you would really be looking at e-learning for everyone. You've got a hybrid method that they've put together, and that's where you've got some learning that occurs in person and some learning that also takes place remotely, but it's based on, there's still some risk with it involved, but it's a hybrid model, which is a lot of the proposals that we have shared and are putting out tonight. And then the last one is, is when those risk rates are very, very small, and you can bring everybody back to in-person. So how do they go about determining those ranges? And this is what was shared with us two Fridays ago. As you see, the TV screen means that the recommendation is complete e-learning. So this is about diagnostic testing turnaround time. This is when it's greater than 10 days, they would be recommending e-learning because there's not a great way for them to be able to monitor outbreaks, and that puts our community at risk. If you've got testing turnaround time in three to 10 days, that's a much quicker turnaround time with this model, hybrid model, or excuse me, with this model, they're recommending hybrid, hybrid learning. And then if it's less than three days, it is very comfortable to bring all people back to all in-person. The incident rate is basically the daily average of people that are testing positive. So if it's greater than 14 per 100,000, again, you're back to an e-learning model. It means that our rate and our incident rate is very, very high. Seven to 14, average, that is the range where they would put us back into a hybrid model. If it's less than seven people per 100,000, you're at a low rate, and all people would be able to return to in-person. They also now provide us with something that is called the youth incident rate. And as I said, that's for our kids that are 0 to 18 and how they're testing. Those metrics and the scale is the exact same as what our county rate was, incident rate was. So those numbers stay the same, but that's for kids 0 to 18. So what does that mean? So if you were to apply that, and what I did was, I went back and I took a look at, which would have been September 28th and October 5th, you need to get 10 days. So every seven days, we get those reports. So September 28th and on October 5th, if you were to look at the Boone County positivity rate, right now, our county's positivity rate is very, very high. On September 28th, our positivity rate was 9%, and last week, on Friday, our positivity rate came back at 10.2%. So we wouldn't meet that metric, and you'd need to meet all five. Diagnostic testing turnaround was three in two days, so we were definitely solid with the diagnostic testing turnaround. Our incident rate for the community, not just 0 to 18, but it's everyone, the week of September 28th, it was 14, so right at the top edge of hybrid model, and 21 was the average number of positive rates last week. So we would fall outside on that metric and not be able to bring students back. Youth incident rate is right around 11 to 12, so we would fall in the hybrid model with that. So our youth incidents rate was much, much better than our regular county incident rate, if that makes sense. At this point, before I turn it over to Carrie, and we talked about the timeline, I kind of gave you a lot of information there, both on nursing protocols, custodial protocols, and the Boone County Health Department metrics. Do I have any questions or discussion that you would like to entertain regarding that information? Like I said, with the county metrics, this is something they ramped out to us two Fridays ago. This is their recommendation that we use as our metrics to be able to look at, follow, and kind of be able to predict when we can start to bring those next groups of students back. So.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
Mike, how does this correlate? I realize I'm jumping the gun a little bit talking about schedule, but how does this correlate to the phases that you're proposing for the upcoming play?
Good question. So what we did here, and I worked with the Boone County Health Department on this, is I'm going to be honest with you. I put deadlines or timelines in there so that people have a perspective of when, if everything were to be favorable moving forward from this Friday to the following Friday, we could possibly bring our first phase of kids back October 19th. And that is, that is looking at two periods of that, basically trying to get that 10-day window or the 14 days separated, where we could have positive rates. And that is us with very, very optimistic thinking to try to get kids back into school. As you look at that, though, a couple of things I'd take into consideration. One is, with those two weeks, that is a pretty aggressive plan, and my concern is, is right now, our positivity rate is so high. So that is a really pie-in-the-sky type of date that I've given you there. The second thing that I would ask is, is I'd rather have the board focus more on the plan and give me the freedom using these metrics. And I don't want to call it freedom, but if I'd use these metrics as a parameter, and the board is okay with the plan, we can monitor those metrics and start to get communications up to parents to say, be prepared. If the metrics hold, this is when we would look to bring you back to classes. Did that help answer your question, Carl? Good question, though. One other thing let me add in there too, is there's a reason that we picked two weeks. Two weeks is kind of your natural quarantine cycle. A lot of times, what you'll see is your first week is usually relatively smooth and well, and a lot of your outbreaks start to pop up through Week Two. So in my conversations with the Boone County Health Department, they felt that the two-week phase-in periods made a lot of sense to, like I said, hit that natural quarantine cycle. So if something pops up, you've got time to pivot and react.
Carl, I know there was at least a little bit of discussion about whether we should post dates or not post dates. I think there are people who felt both ways with everything going on at the county level. Maybe we shouldn't put dates on this, but I think Mike wanted to make it clear that we are moving forward and with the caveat that, based on what the Health Department says, we may not be able to stick with those.
The other thing that having those dates in there too, is if we pass Phase One tonight, we can start to ramp out some communications to parents so that they can plan and be ready to move and make the arrangements that they need to for their students to come back to school, and have choices for whether or not they're going to bring their kid back to school, or whether they want to remain remote. And you need a little bit of time to make sure that they've got time to make plans, all fully while communicating that metrics being favorable.
Any other questions for Mike?
Do we need to meet all metrics, or is it like three out of four, or just across the board, all of them?
Their recommendation is that all five of them too. By the time you work in, that the metrics hold steady for 10. They wanted to make sure that all five of those were meeting.
All five metrics hold for at least 10 days?
The four metrics above it. I was considering the one holding for 10 days, the fifth metric, but the four above that are in the favorable condition for 10 days straight.
You can proceed to the Phase One update if you want to.
Sure. At this point, I'll turn it over to Carrie. Carrie's going to just describe our phases. Some of the timelines, we adjusted. We did move some things up to be a little more proactive.
So as Mike already mentioned, you know, these dates are very fluid, but what we want to work on is having these phase-in dates between Phase One, Two, and Three be a minimum of two weeks between each phase. So while these dates might move, then, you know, if one phase gets moved back, the others would get moved back because we need to keep a minimum of two weeks. We are still holding Phase Four for second semester because that is when all high school students will come back. And as we mentioned last time... And as we mentioned last time, with the schedule changes and some of the classes that students may not be able to take in second semester if they remain remote, we need to have that option and keep them coming back at semester because of credits. All of the other ones could be sooner, but again, the times are really, the dates are really fluid. They're definitely going to change. When you look at phase one, the change we made here that is different from last time you saw phase one is the fifth through eighth grade IEP students. We would like to bring them back in phase one on an alternating A/B schedule and as well as pre-K and kindergarten. And those are the same as what you saw the first, first time we presented this. Pre-K would be A/B by week with their AM and PM cohorts, and kindergarten would be Tuesday through Friday, every morning from 8:00 to 10:30 for their in-person instruction, and then they would receive remote instruction in the afternoon. Phase two is the same that you saw before. We would also in phase two then bring back fifth, or nine through 12 IEP students. We would add them. And then we would add first and second grade half-day in the morning on Tuesday through Friday. And we would also add third and fourth grade IEP for support by appointment on Mondays. And then in phase three, we would bring back all third and fourth graders AM Tuesday through Friday. We'd bring back fifth through eighth grade students on an A/B schedule every day, alternating. And then we'd bring back ninth through 12th grade ELL and at-risk on an A/B schedule, still following the schedule that the high school is currently following for all of their other remote learners. So, they would only be in-person two days a week, either Monday and Thursday or Tuesday and Friday. And then in phase four is when we would bring back all high school students on an A/B schedule, alternating each day of the week.
Entertain comments, questions, discussions.
Any questions or comments?
Carrie, I know we're a long ways from phase four, but having the high school students back, or well, I guess five through 12 back full-time and K through four half-day AM, would that maybe, I'm concerned it might cause some problems for like childcare for parents that are counting on the older kids to watch the younger ones? And I know we're a long ways out from this, so.
Yes, it could. I can't, I don't know if it will or not. It depends on the family. But yes, we would, those K through four students would still be half-day in the AM because the teachers would then in the afternoon be teaching their students who are full-remote. And as of right now, based on the data we have, every single one of our K4 teachers will have students that are full-remote.
I know one of the questions that came up quite a bit was, could we switch to another remote teacher now? And through our discussion, we went and we chose to keep our elementary kids with their assigned homeroom teachers within their home room, or within their home school so that we didn't have a mass switch within the middle of the year. And I know that Carrie, you kind of looked, we would have large numbers of kids switching in the middle of the year if we didn't go with a similar approach to that. So, we felt that that would break up the continuity of a student's education, the relationship with their teachers, which is also very important at the elementary levels.
Yeah, I ran the numbers for kindergarten, and based on the data we have, we have 26 kindergarten students who would want to remain full-remote. That would require two remote learning teachers, two full-time teachers to become remote learning teachers because our kindergarten class size is capped at 24. So, that would take two of our teachers who are currently teaching students, they would become remote learning teachers. Any of their current students who would be, want to be in-person would have to be assigned to a new teacher. Plus, all of our students who want to be remote would have new teachers for that remote. When I total it up, it would be 40 kindergarten students that would have to have a new teacher out of about 110.
Wait, can you say that again?
If we, if we changed, if we went to full days with K4, which means we would have to assign a-
Full days?
Full days. If we went to a full day with K4 instead of the half-day, we would have to assign full-time remote learning teachers. And so, if we did that for our kindergarten, for example, based on the data we have from the surveys we have given, we have 26 kindergartners who would want to be full-remote. We'd have to have two full-time remote learning teachers. And so, with all of the shuffling, we would have 40 kindergarten students that would have to have a new teacher, either a new remote teacher because they're staying home or a new teacher when they come to school that they would have for in-person learning. We would also probably have to transfer a teacher from one building to another.
What happens in this situation with parents who just say, I do, I'm going to stay remote?
They would have the remote learning teacher, which might not be the teacher they have now, if we went to a full remote learning teacher. They would prob, that, those students may have to change teachers as well.
So, those parents who are choosing to stay, will choose to stay remote, will just get the second half of the day education?
Yes, they will get two and a half hours. Students that come in person will get two and a half hours from their classroom teacher from 8:00 to 10:30. And then in the afternoon, our full-remote students from their same classroom teacher that they've had so far this entire year, they will have classroom instruction from that teacher from 12:15 to 2:45. So, they'll all get, everyone will get two and a half hours of instruction from that classroom teacher. On the time that they're not with that classroom teacher, they will have remote instruction in PE, music, art, and they'll have their library time. But all of that will be virtual. PE, music, art, and library will all be virtual.
Carrie, I have to assume that we are burdening a not insignificant portion of the district by having our K through fourth grades be on a completely different schedule than assuming we can move quickly to phase four, hopefully, by the time we're full through this. If every other school is on a full-day A/B schedule and we have a small cohort that is not following that same pattern, even though it is inconvenient perhaps and a bit jarring to switch teachers, the long-term inconvenience of still needing to juggle perhaps childcare, transportation, or any of the other needs for that, the number of kids that are probably going to be overlapping between our elementary schools and our upper elementary school or more, it seems, I'm not sure where the balance is on that, to have those be at such a different schedule.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it's a struggle. And so, for us, when we were looking at this, we saw this as, I think the kindest way to say it is the next best thing we can do. It's not perfect, but it's the next best thing we can do for our students. Now, if we would like to consider the full day, we would need to go to an A/B schedule for K4 as well. So, we would go to A/B because with the unstructured time of lunch and recess, especially with these young students, we, we would need less students in the building. So, we would need to go to an A/B schedule with K4, and then we would need to do those remote learning teachers. And that is something we could definitely look into and explore. When we were looking at this and looking at it in the idea of that we would have those, all of those students who have built relationships with their teachers over the last four weeks, and by the time we get, you know, it could be eight weeks, that they would have to have a new teacher, that, that's going to be challenging for some of those elementary students. And, but that is definitely something we could explore and that we could, we could go that route if that's, we have, we have that option as well.
Any other questions for Carrie?
So, if somebody would, with the current outbreak that we have in a building, what would that look like if we had kids back in the building? What layout, the hypotheticals of what we would be doing had that outbreak occurred with kids in the school?
I can kind of handle that, and then Barb, we'll let you run into your protocol conversations. So, really what it does is it depends on who is identified where. I know that the first steps that they do is for the contract tracing. They will be looking for people inside of six feet or within six feet for 15 minutes or more. They encourage face masks, but even if it, if you are inside of that 16 feet for 15 minutes or more, they're probably going to quarantine the person in front of you, the person behind you, left and right. The idea behind it is, is that they're going to look to just only take the people that had that direct exposure, not look to close an entire class or class down. But you will, you'll be managing quarantines. Now, if a teacher needs to go home, you can now have a, an assistant that is within the classroom to help with, you know, the management and stuff that goes on in the classroom. If the teacher's quarantined and feeling just fine, they could virtually teach that classroom from home because subs are going to be an issue to find. If a whole class gets sent home, you could have everybody go to remote learning based on the quarantine, and the teacher also teach virtually from home as well. There's a lot of different scenarios that kind of come into play depending on the size and the range of the quarantine.
So, then that wouldn't, there currently isn't enough people sick to close that school?
Sitting in it, I just-
So, they're currently, the level of individuals currently testing positive for COVID at that school don't reach a level that we would, that we would automatically close that school for two weeks to send everybody home?
I think that's something we would work directly with the Health Department on to determine. I'm not sure if I'm hitting your question right. Are you saying, do we draw our limits as to say, when do we send that group or that school, close that school down?
I'm just trying to get a sense of when, when does one school have a outbreak big enough? It seems like that threshold's getting pretty close.
I'm not sure how the Boone County Health Department would look at that. I know that we've worked back and forth with them on that. I don't know, Barb, do you, have you gotten a sense from the Boone County Health Department how that they would look upon a closure or a, what it takes to close?
They would check it, you know, issue by issue to see how many students, how many staff, that type of thing. They would have to evaluate that on a case-by-case. It wouldn't be a blanket statement.
I think sometimes, too, it depends on, are they a similar instance versus two different type instances? And then what is kind of the containment with it? There's a lot of factors that go to it. But to be honest with you, I don't know the direct number that they would say, time to close.
Any other questions for Mike? Mike, was there anything else you wanted to cover?
I think I just wanted to be real clear with what our recommendation was. We are recommending that the board pass phase one tonight as presented with the stipulation that the board in the next agenda would be, be putting together this committee, which we've already approved, that would then vet phases two, three, and four with planning to go on with that, too, or discussion input, planning, that would, a recommendation that would come back from that committee to move forward then with two, three, and four. So, it's passing phase one tonight.
Mike, I've got, I've got a question about that, but my mic was off. I was busy fiddling with it, trying to get it back on previously. Just a clarification question, too. What is the administrative concern for, I guess maybe the right way to say this is where the heaviest burden is for our resources in that we have these staggered cohorts where, while we have isolated buildings, we're not phasing them in at the same rate. So, we're not phasing in the high school at the same rate as the middle school. We're not phasing, so we're still going to be spreading out the reintroduction of students across these phases. And I'm curious what your concerns are that are driving why the high school isn't following a parallel track as the middle school and the elementary schools? And what's some of the logic behind that?
So, for me, I feel pretty confident with the way we've got it phased in and the structure that, in which it comes, that as you do this, all groups seem very, very manageable. The numbers seem very manageable. Is there a guarantee you keep COVID out? No, I mean, that still concerns me. But with this, you bring great structure, you minimize risk, and it's a start and a phase to start getting kids back in school, which where we need to have them.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess my question is, when we have relatively isolated populations in buildings, so we have seventh and eighth isolated, we've got fifth and sixth isolated, we've got our high school fairly well-isolated, I'm still not tracking exactly why we're bringing in a small group in one building and the rest of the buildings are remaining empty, then we're bringing another small group in, the rest of the buildings are remaining empty, and so on. Again, trying to think about what our parents and what our families are going to do to try to also sync their lives up with our reintroduction plan. What are your concerns for the resources that we can't accommodate our students at the same rate in all of our buildings?
Yeah, so what we look to do is we really look to target our most impacted kids on in-person instruction in a phase that way. That was what we tried to do. We talked about, we talked about being even more aggressive with some of the other phases in which we could do it. And each phase that you kind of brought back, we did have conversations, too, about older students sometimes being the ones that are also helping with the supervision at home. The ripple effect that hit every single one of them was just immense, and we just tried to keep that as logical as we could. And there's still ripples in it. Nothing's perfect here. But we tried to keep all that stuff in a logical sequence of the best way to bring kids back by prioritizing the kids that needed in-person instruction the best. Any little change or little move that we make, and I know we talked about timing for middle schools, we talked about timing for, you know, special ed students, has a ripple effect somewhere else, whether it's the lower or the upper level. And we tried to make that sequentially fall in as most logical sequences we could.
Yeah, I get that. I guess I'm still, I'm still fishing for the answer that I hadn't heard yet, or I don't have an answer, I guess. I don't mean to keep harping on this, but-
Carrie, do you remember, or Melissa, we talked at length about that, or we talked about just moving groups in different places, and it just, it really seemed like no matter where you moved them, the ripple effect, whether it was how it impacted instruction, how it impacted the teacher's day, and how to get the instruction across, you know, or not across, but how to get the instruction delivered, just ripple effect had a lot of impact on everything, so. Do you remember a specific instance of what we talked about? I know we talked about it at an administrative meeting for what, 45 minutes about, every time we tried to adjust something, and I can't, throwing a blank off the top of my head, a lot of it had to do with scheduling, though.
Are you asking why, like, we're not bringing kids back to every school in phase one?
Yes, yeah, why we, why we don't have the at-risk students that need support phased in at the same time across our campus when we've got relatively isolated populations? I guess that's my question, yeah.
Really, it was we were trying to keep the numbers low. Again, we could be more aggressive with some of these groups. And I, but we'd have to go back down and sit down to see where we would be able to start with that and how it would be best to break up some of those groups, to be more, a little bit more aggressive. We could look at being a little bit more aggressive with some of those groups at like the high school and things, but I think some of it just had to do with trying to really start with small groups. And since high school does have a life skills program, those students are already back, so that was one group that's already here. And since like middle school does not have that, that was one reason why we added like the fifth through eighth IEPs in, in phase one to start bringing some of those small groups back. But, I mean, again, if that's something that the board would like us to move faster on, those specific small groups, we could look at that in doing that. But I think it was just really to try to keep the risk low and keep the numbers low.
Yeah, and I guess my question was really, was there some type of bottleneck in resources or concern about our ability to facilitate that amount of students that are currently at the district and so why we're staggering across the buildings? Because if we're bringing an A/B cohort into the upper elementary school and the middle school, why wouldn't we not do the same thing in sync with our high school? If we're bringing our at-risk kids in earlier in the phases, which are small groups, do we have enough staff? Do we have enough supplies to also do that in all of our buildings? It just, I'm pushing a little bit on why we might leave the high school- It just, I'm pushing a little bit on why we might leave the high school largely empty until the end of phase three and to phase four, when all of our other buildings are starting to move into a higher populated.
Again, I just think it goes back to we were trying to minimize risk, bring smaller groups of kids in, and start an easy phase in plan to have success.
But small groups district-wide or small groups in individual buildings?
And then again, too, we targeted our students that we felt were our groups that had the hugest impact and needed the in-person instructor. Not that everybody doesn't need it, but the kindergarten, the life skills, those kids there, man, the e-learning is very, very difficult.
Yeah, and I think part of the reason too at the high school is because of the, so many specialty classes and singleton classes, there's a lot more movement throughout the building. And so I think just maybe to keep that off a little bit, again, not that we don't want those students back, but to give us more time to plan for that movement. And so that's also, we do have a lot more movement at the high school because of a lot of those singleton classes and students moving classes much more. It's just more to manage with that, to just to give us a little bit more time, but we could move some of those groups up in some of those small groups as well.
Yeah, if that was a direction, we could definitely be more aggressive.
Anybody still processing anything? Carrie has mentioned a number of times we could discuss this further. We could look at that also, and that sort of relates to our next business item, but we want to finish this phase one discussion first. If anybody, if nobody else has any questions for Mike, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the phase one for the reentry plan as presented.
As presented? All right, I've got a motion by Hazel Horst. Do I have a second? Tom, are you trying to speak? I think he's turned his mic back on. Yes, no?
I just was trying to hear the motion without a beat.
Okay, the motion was to, to accept the motion that Mike provided as, as presented. Phase one of the reentry plan. So we have a motion? Do we have a second? Calling once? Calling twice?
I'll second this so we can discuss it a little bit.
Okay, we do have a second by Rudy. Motion by Hazel Horst and a second by Rudy. We can have further discussion. Concerns? I guess we should be discussing concerns because that was a tough second to get, so maybe if people were willing to share their reservations. No doubt the state of the Boone County Health Department is giving everybody a moment of pause. Anything else?
Officially, motion as it stands approves the plan as written.
Phase one.
Just phase one.
Only phase one.
Only phase one.
Phase two, three, and four, we could be discussing at the committee.
We'll be discussing at the board committee, which is the next agenda item. So he's only presenting number one. I know we discussed all of the plans today, but he's only asking that we pass phase one as is. And I know I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, but in the requests coming from all different directions for more communication, more cooperation between parents, communities, teachers, and everybody, a few catchphrases I've heard tonight. We have the board committee, return to school board committee that will be meeting as soon as we can get that together to allow for more discourse, to discuss phase two, three, and four.
Give me the hypothetical schedule here of what it looks like to not approve phase two, three, and four. Have one out there that have a potential phase two start date of October 19. Yes.
So we talked a little bit about this too. My goal would be we get this committee assembled this week.
What's the new start date of phase two?
What's that?
What's the new start date of phase two?
So, well, phase two, like I said, the dates, they're pie in the sky. My goal would be, is that we'd get the committee put together yet this week. We'd have our first meeting on the 14th. We'd have another meeting on the, let's see, what is today, the 6th, 13th? The 21st, so you'd have two meetings. Our board meeting is the 20th, if you needed to call a special board meeting, you know, somewhere hopefully before November 2nd, that could push phase two back a little bit. If you needed two meetings, if you only needed one meeting, you'd be able to have a special meeting the week of the 21st. But you want to make sure that everybody's had a voice and a chance to be heard and.
Would you feel more comfortable with phase one and two grouped together, Carl?
Can't see the face I'm taking. No, it's not a level, it's not necessarily being more comfortable with anything. I was just trying to do the math a little bit about how we were proposing to continue to keep moving forward when we were trying to stack a pretty significant amount of meetings.
It'll, it'll put a little time in there, but I want to be aggressive with it because it's important that if the metrics meet, we need to start looking at getting groups of kids back.
But as of now, we're not even on target, are we, to meet the October 19th start date for phase one?
Your next two metrics will determine that.
So for sake of argument, let's just say we're not, and it pushes that date of phase one back, and that automatically pushes all the other phases back also. Which was part of that discussion about do we post dates now and get people in the right frame of mind, or do we perhaps create mayhem in people thinking, well, these are the dates now, why aren't they sticking with the dates? Those are the dates that were published. And there was a lot of good reasoning rationale, I think, for both.
But I think the reason I felt that the timelines are in there is because if the board passes, you know, a phase or some phases, it starts to get people in the mindset of we're returning. Here's our time windows of when this return could take place. And it allows people to start to plan and make arrangements and do whatever it is they need to do to be ready for that transition.
Hypothetically, what's the window between knowing the most recent metric that we're going to use to determine this and the start date of one of these phases? What's the, what's the closest number there? Is that five days? Is that four days?
I would want to keep it seven days out at least. You need to get communications out to parents. You need to give them a chance to commit to what they're, what they're going to do, are they returning? You also need to give transportation time. I'd like to see a week's, a week's lead time. I'm worried that if I do something within five, four, or three days, it's hectic, communication's not tight. Communication stuff needs to be tight as you're bringing kids back to school so parents know where they're going to be, what time they're going to be, and we can keep track of everybody that's coming. I'm looking to hold Mondays or depending on what off days are Tuesdays, if there's a Monday off day, but just at fresh starts of weeks to phase groups back in.
And the motion as presented states that all dates are presented, all dates that are presented are tentative pending favorable health metrics. So we aren't committing to the October, by voting for this, nobody is being forced to commit to the October 19th. Should metrics not be in our favor? At least any questions? No? Any other questions? Concerns?
So I think my concern is that, you know, we currently have an outbreak that under no circumstances should have happened.
In our schools, you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
And we currently are in a region that's trending seven and a half percent higher than the state average. My concern that I've addressed in this to start with is do we have the wherewithal as a community to pull together and do what we need to do to get our kids back in school? I think that if you look at the numbers that we've been posting in the last two weeks, the answer that has to be a no. And, you know, that's not really on the kids. I hate to say it, but on the parents and the decision-making that's going on. That's what gives, that's what gives me pause to get on board with this. It has nothing to do with the kids. I truly believe in them. I just don't know whether we're committed enough as a community to make the changes necessary to make this work long-term. I, I really feel like that we're in a place where all we're going to be doing is managing quarantines going forward if something doesn't change in the community, and that's, that's my concern. That's where my hesitancy is in this. I'm willing to give it a shot to start down this path, but I'll be the first one to recommend pulling the plug on the whole thing if it goes to where it is again today.
And that's in reference to some emails that we've gotten related to in-school positives for the sake of the audience. Brian, did you have anything you were interested in sharing? No? No? Mary? We have a motion and a second? Okay.
Sorry, I don't have anything additional to add.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll put it to vote. Kelly, are you ready? And just one last time, this is for the approval of the modified reentry plan. Phase one of this modified reentry plan. All dates that are presented are tentative pending unfavorable health metrics. Additional information has been added to the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and read this whole thing so we're clear, Mike. To address any concerns from nursing supplies and custodial procedures, new metrics that are being used by the Boone County Health Department will be used to help pinpoint the timing that phases can be added. Phases two, three, and four will be approved at a later time when they have been reviewed and discussed through the return to school committee. Go ahead, Kelly.
Mr. Haverley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie? Mr. Mahland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horst?
Yes.
Motion passes. That takes us to unfinished business, the modified reentry plan. I just wanted to let everybody know that at Mr. Hazel, sorry, Mr. Hazel Horst. Mr. Kinzer's request to begin a committee to begin discussing the metrics and how they'd be used and how that information would be shared, we are putting together a return to school committee. And that has, will be rolled out as soon as possible to increase communication and cooperation between the parents, community, and teachers. I'd like to say at the get-go that word has been stated many times, no plan is going to be put together as the admin team realizes. And if parents talk with parents of other leanings, they'll, they'll realize that there's going to be no plan that's pleased everybody. But we try to put together some mature and respectful discourse and some, as Ed would say, robust discussion about how we can best roll out the next phases and how we can be as inclusive as possible. So this is going to be something that is going to be held at a board committee level, which will allow for people to have their voices heard a little bit more and make sure that everybody, as many people as possible are on board with this and feel that their voice has been heard so that all stakeholders really feel part of this decision-making and that they aren't being left out. We are, I'm putting together the names right now. I have asked administrators if you would also, everybody. I think pretty much everybody is sort of hoped to be on that committee that's sitting at our admin team table. If you will reach out to your people to make sure that we have a staff member and a staff member and a parent from each school. That would be ideal. Because we don't want anybody to feel like their voice hasn't been heard, and we know, we understand that the nature of these board decisions and audience to visitors really allows you to say something but not have much interaction with, with the board or anybody that's making those decisions. So we've got a purpose together. We've got some responsibilities together, and we've got a good set of committee members together, but I'm still looking for especially a staff member from each school. And I've got a list of parents, and just for the record, any parent who is interested in being on that committee can reach out to me. And anybody is welcome to attend those committees. Unfortunately, at this point in time, we'll have to keep it to 20.
25.
25, thank you. We'll have to keep it to 25, but hopefully they will be able to be larger committee meetings very soon so that nobody feels like they're not being heard or they're being left out of decision-making. Any other questions about the board committee? Have I covered anything, everything? Tom, is there anything else you'd like me to discuss?
No, I think that you covered it all well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And we're hoping, I think we're shooting for next Wednesday as perhaps to be our first, our first meeting. So when the, and we'll, we'll get that out. We'll put the committee together. We'll get those names out when it has been finalized. A reminder that anybody can attend those meetings. We won't be able to go over 25. But even if you're not on the actual committee, you could reach out to whichever staff member, parent, admin, superintendent, board member you feel would voice your concerns the most, and we can have some good hearty discourse on that. And that will be our best attempt to make sure that everybody's on board with this and feels part of that. Thank you, Mike, for allowing that. Not that you really would have not allowed it, but you've been very amenable to the idea. And we look forward to some great stuff with that, with that committee. Any other questions before we adjourn? No? Any other items we should discuss? All right, can I have a motion and a second for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Hazel Horst and a second by Maxie. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right, thank you, everybody, for attending. It's one of our speediest board meetings ever.
Thank you, Tom. Have a good night.